Good afternoon, everyone. Today is July 9, 2024. This is a city of Prescott City Council voting meeting. Well.
Testing. Speakers are up.
My light is on. Well, is that any better? We got it now? There we go. All right. Well, thank you all for coming today. This is our first meeting after the conclusion of our rodeo week, so I hope everyone had a chance to enjoy that. And also our wonderful Independence Day celebration out at Watson Lake. And in honor of that, I wore my Declaration of Independence tie today. It's got everybody's signature that signed the declaration, so I thought that was appropriate. So with that said, Mayor Protam, do we have any announcements or introductions today?
Yes, we do. We've got a few messages here. The City of Prescott Council members and staff recently learned of the passing of former City Council member Alan Carlo, who served on council from 2011 to 2013 and served as the council liaison to the Community Development Block Grant Committee. Mr. Carlo served a two-year term, replacing Tammy Lynn, who resigned from council to move out of the city. Following his term, Mr. Carlo continued to be an active citizen as a citizen advocate in the city and for other matters. We want to extend our heartfelt condolences to the family and friends of Mr. Carlo. We are grateful for his service to the citizens of Prescott. Number two, the City of Prescott Preservation Commission will have a regular meeting on Friday, July 12, at 9:00 a.m. at 201 North Montezuma Street, third-floor council chambers, right here, to hear an update on the plans for the assembly at the Old City Hall project. The proposed redevelopment project has spaces for retail and restaurants on the main level with upper levels consisting of a hotel with 109 guest rooms and conference meeting spaces. The commission reviewed this project in a study session on May 10, then in a regular meeting on June 14. No action was taken at either meeting, but public comment was received, as well as some direction from commission members. July 12 will be the study session where the commission will receive an update from the developers on their redesign of the project. No vote is scheduled for this meeting. As a reminder, the next city council meeting will take place on Tuesday, August 13, and we look forward to seeing everyone then. Thank you.
Very good. Now we'll have an invocation from Rabbi Julie Coslow with the Orit Jewish Community, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance conducted by Councilmember Rusing.
Good afternoon. Do you remember the last lesson we had about how my folks say amen, which is about a couple thousand years old? Do you remember the hat? So when I'm done, I'm going to look up at you, and then you guys say amen, and then I'll say amen. Okay? Which is a little different how you do it. Good afternoon, may good and distinguished city council members. The times indeed are strange. It's a comfort for me, being a clergy soul who is still invited, to frame these meetings in a spiritual realm, for our world seems only to know life is modeled by a sports team mentality. There are winners, and there are losers, and nothing in between that would temper the humanity. Thank you for modeling for our city, our diverse community, and for the world by this invitation you've extended to me, for it speaks loudly in saying that there is something higher, more vital, something profoundly spiritual in everything we do, and that to ignore the call of the sacred in any arena of life would be moral negligence. To frame this meeting in prayer is to cast it towards a higher dimension, not where there are winners and losers, but a realm where all are one, a realm where we each are a mere cell in the body of humanity, a realm where our every action, every decision, every thought changes the very DNA of creation. This realm is not out of our reach. It is the truth beneath the games that humans play. It's right here, and it's right now. Let it be distinguished members of this noble and democratically chosen body, that each of you understand to your core of your being that your service is for the betterment of everyone, that your team holds no inherent worthiness over any other team, that your responsibility is to the uplift, the betterment, and the inspiration for all of God's creatures. It takes strength to demand of your own spirit to remain above the game, beyond the win and lose, and then to cast your decision straight towards the dream of a better world for all of us. We ask nothing less of you. May you be the leaders we need you to be, true moral guides.
Amen.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you kindly.
We'll start off with a roll call, please.
Mayor, good.
Present.
Mayor Protam Cantelmi.
Here.
Councilwoman Freworth.
Here.
Councilwoman Gambogi.
I'm here.
Councilwoman Montoya.
Still here.
Councilwoman Moore.
Here.
And Councilmember Rusing.
Present.
All are present.
Next, we'll move on to the open call to the public.
Thank you, Mayor. The City of Prescott welcomes public engagement. Residents may comment and address the council regarding matters that are not included on the posted agenda during the call to the public. If you wish to speak, please complete a green speaker card and submit it to me prior to the meeting being convened. As a reminder, speakers are limited to four minutes, and the call to the public will be limited to 40 minutes in total with the following stipulations. Citizens will be limited to addressing the council on the same topic only four times in total. If a topic has been addressed more than five times by different speakers, the mayor may limit future discussion on the topic. And topics of a primarily national concern may be limited at the discretion of the mayor. And I do not have any public comment cards today.
And we'll move on to the consent agenda. Does anyone wish to pull any items from the consent agenda?
And Mayor, if I may just preface some of your discussions real quick. On items F, G, H, and I, these are related to bed tax or transient occupancy tax. These were previously approved administratively, so they wouldn't be things that council has seen. But about a year or two ago, we've required contracts for these, and so by our charter, contracts have to go to council. So that's why there's a change in process a little bit. Normally, as I mentioned, they'd be approved administratively, and now you're seeing them to vote on them.
Which is exactly what I was going to say when I pulled those items. So even though people seeing this on the consent agenda might be scratching their head a little bit, because they're generally just administratively approved, but since they're contract references to individual contracts under these tourism grants, that's why we're voting on them. So I don't think they really need to be polled, but now that we have the explanation, we can move on with voting on them as a component of the consent agenda. Any other items anybody wants to pull? No? All right, in that case, I will entertain a motion for the consent, full consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve Consent Agenda Items A through I.
Would you take A through M, Ted?
It goes all the way to M, that's the next page.
A through M.
A through M.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Passes 7-0.
All right, we'll now move on to the Consent Ordinance Item 8A.
Adoption of Ordinance Number 2024-1860, setting the fiscal year 25 city property tax levy in ordinance of the mayor and council of the City of Prescott, Yavapai County, Arizona, levying upon the assessed valuation of the property within the City of Prescott, subject to taxation, a certain sum upon each $100 of valuation sufficient to raise the amount estimated to be required in the annual budget, less the amount estimated to be received from other sources of revenue providing funds for the general municipal expenses for the fiscal year ending on the 30th day of June 2025, and adoption of Ordinance Number 2024-1866 in ordinance of the mayor and council of the City of Prescott, Yavapai County, Arizona, amending Title I, Chapter 1-2, Human Resources, Section 1-2-5, Political Activity Contributions and Solicitations, by deleting subsection 1-2-5C and revising subsection 1-2-5, 1-2-0-5D, and adding a severance provision.
That was terrific, city clerk. And I apologize, because we are going to be voting on both 8A and 8B as a combined consent I'll entertain a motion on this unless we have any public comment.
No public comment, Mayor. And I don't know if staff has anything to add. No?
I move to adopt Consent Ordinance Items 8A and 8B.
Second.
We have a motion and a second.
Mayor, are you a yes on these two?
Well, I vote aye, but I don't see a screen.
Passes 7-0.
Very good. We'll now vote, we'll move on to the regular agenda, item 9A.
Adoption of Resolution Number 2024-1896, approving the Infrastructure Improvement Plan and Land Use Assumption.
Thank you, city clerk. Mayor and council, this is one of those steps. We just did the workshop on the proposed impact fees. Well, this is the adoption of the land use assumptions, the IIP, which we had a public hearing on on May 28, I believe. It's been published for the last, I believe, 90 days. This is an extensive document. It's like 400 and some pages in your packet, and this is a necessary step as we move through the process to implement impact fees. And again, it was part of the workshop that we just finished, and I'd be happy to answer
Council, have any questions or concerns? Do we have any public comment?
We do not, Mayor.
Then I'll entertain a motion on this item 9A.
Mayor, I move to adopt Resolution Number 2024-1896.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
All right, we move on to item 9B.
Adoption of Notice of Intent to Set a Public Hearing to Discuss and Review an Update to the City of Prescott's Development Impact Fees pursuant to ARS Section 9-463.05.
Thank you, Sarah. Mark Woodfield, Budget Finance Director, Mayor and Council, this is, again, the next step we just discussed in the workshop. This is setting the public hearing for the impact fee studies that we just reviewed with the consultant. Those documents, as well as the land use assumptions and infrastructure improvement planned, and all of our other PowerPoints, including the PowerPoints we just went through, are all available on our website. And the final full rate studies, which were part of the workshop we just finished, are also on our available website. This item here is setting our public hearing date for August 13. And again, we took public comment today, but that is the actual legal official required public hearing. After that public hearing, October 8, council meeting will be the date that the council will consider setting the impact fees. So up until that point, council can do whatever they want with the fees, lower but not higher, or adopt them as presented. With that, I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions, the council? Councilwoman Moore?
Thank you, Mayor. Mark, I think it is important that we do have some follow-up on all of the questions that we had today in our study session for that August meeting, because there was a lot of unsettledness.
Absolutely, and I did discuss that with the consultants after the workshop. They are going to provide a report based on the items that were in question relating to the splits and the other things, and that'll be part of your packet on the 13th.
Thank you.
Very good. Any other questions? Any public comment?
No, Mayor.
Then I'll entertain a motion on 9B.
Mayor, I move to approve the attach notice of intent and set a public hearing for August 13, 2024.
Okay, who said second first?
I heard Councilwoman Freworth.
Very good. We have a motion and a second.
Passes 7-0.
Very good. All right, item 9C.
Approval of City Contract Number 2025-046 with Cactus Asphalt for the Fiscal Year 25 Payment Preservation Multi-Layer Project.
Okay. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Janet Ramsey, Public Works, and with me today is Greg Patrick. He is our Payment Management Program Project Manager.
Program.
Manager. See, I knew I was going to screw it up. It's a lot of P's in there. But at any rate, we would like to present to you at the same time today, items 9C and 9D. They're related somewhat, and for efficiency's sake, also, I think it's raining. We might want to get outside and do our dance while we still can. So no doubt you've seen a lot of our projects going on around the city in the last several months, lots of really great projects going forward. Willow Creek has been largely repaired, Iron Springs most recently, and today it is the first meeting of July. We want to waste no time, because we have that tiny little window in which to get our payment management projects going, and so Greg is here to explain a little bit more about what they are, but I'll go through just a little bit of the background first. Item 9C is a contract with Cactus Asphalt in the amount not to exceed $2,371,525.23. Procurement method for this work is ONE GPA, which is a National Government Purchasing Cooperative Contract. And Item D is a contract with Southwest Slurry Seal in an amount not to exceed $1,689,279. The procurement method for this project is job order contracting. We have used a variety of community outreach methods for communicating with the community as we go forward in these projects. And while these projects are largely, or the program is largely on the approved expenditure list, we'll still come and share most of those with you, because I think that's, one, a good way to share with you, and also, two, to help us get the word out there. So we'll be doing that a lot. We also have done a number of community outreach efforts through our current vendor, which is Beta PR. They have done extensive outreach to the affected businesses and homeowners, residents, and a variety of media, including direct contact, direct mail, door hangers, signage, including phone contacts and department numbers. I can go ahead there and slide that far. And with that, I will let Greg tell you about what he's doing and where he's doing it.
All right. So, Mayor, Council, Greg Patrick, Payment Program Manager. So basically, we'll just kind of go over a brief description of what we're doing in each of these projects.
Can you bring the mic closer to you?
Yes, I'm sorry. Location of the projects, the current condition of the roads, and the projected conditions once we're done. We'll start with the multi-layer project. Can we go to that slide? There we go. So for this one, it kind of self-explanatory, as there's several treatment types that we're going to be doing. Some of those are fog seal, chip seal, and then cape seal. And a cape seal is basically a chip seal with a microseal over the surface, over the top of it. Any of the areas that need additional treatment or repairs will be addressed prior to any kind of surface treatment going down. The treatment areas that are included into this project are Pleasant Valley, Jack Drive, Meadow Ridge, Granite Shadows, Park Avenue, and Doherty, and several surrounding streets around those roads. The current-
Greg, I want to interrupt you.
Yes, sir.
Because I got a call from somebody who lived on Oregon Avenue complaining about the terrible condition. So the next day, I drove over there, and I drove up and down that street about five or six times, and by the time I completed it, the trailer came in announcing that this street was being rebuilt. So I can't tell you how good that made me look. So I appreciate that, and I think the resident there goes, boy, talking to the mayor really helps.
Yeah. Immediate action.
Timing is everything.
Yes. And so the current PCI, average current PCI for the roads that are going to be fog sealed, not the other treatments, is a 78. We're hoping to bring that up by the time the project's done to end of the 90s, so we can see some improvement there. The other roads that are scheduled for the other surface treatments, the chip seals and the cape seals, their average PCI currently is about a 36, which is really quite low, getting into the backlog range. So we're trying to get those out of that range and get them taken care of prior to having to do a major repair. We're hoping to get those up into the 80s by the time this project is complete. In all, this project will be doing about four and a half center lane miles. We'll be treating about four and a half center lane miles on that one. And then if we can go to the multi, or the microseal. So microseal project, it's kind of what it sounds like. It is the same treatment that was done on Willow Creek Road in front of the hospital, so you guys should be fairly familiar with that one. And again, any repairs that need to be done prior to the treatment, we'll be taking care of those. I know that we've identified some areas that have sank, some failures, and stuff like that within these neighborhoods. The subdivisions that we're going to be in is going to be the North 40, Southview, Geneva, Horizon Hills, Granite Springs, and Summit Point. The average PCI for these ones is a 55, and we're hoping to bring those up into the 80s. The approximate center lane miles for this one is 6.8. So for the two projects combined, we will be over 11 center lane miles treated. So with that, if you guys have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Mayor and Council, I just want to remind everyone, for the sake of people watching, for the most part, payment management is not about fixing the worst roads, those in the worst condition first. That's not what we do. And in fact, as Greg mentioned, a lot of it is fog seal. That's the preservation of the roads that are actually in fairly good condition for the long term. So we're talking about life cycling of payment, and that's the emphasis of the payment management program. So while we are doing some that are in the worst condition, we're doing a lot that are in better condition, keeping them in that good condition for as long as possible. Those that get in the really poor condition and need to be completely reconstructed, oftentimes that requires a capital improvement project, and that's an entirely different set of circumstances in which we're doing a very small area for a lot of money. In this case, as Greg's mentioned, it's a lot of area. It is a good chunk of money. That said, the benefits are far reaching across the city.
Well, I do want to mention that I appreciate that, because in the past, only high-volume arterials or feeder streets were really maintained, and some of these smaller areas like Oregon Avenue were really neglected. So I think it's important that we always set aside some of those plans to deal with those really bad pavement areas in some of these smaller neighborhoods. So at least we're responding to some of those really important needs, and I know that microseal is so important, because all it takes is a couple of small cracks in those surfaces, and you get a real degradation of the underlying area beneath the pavement. So those are needed, and thank you for that. Mayor Protam, you had a question?
I do have a question. So Janet, how were these projects decided? Is that because of our software, that we were rating and starting to use that software?
So the Payment Condition Index, the PCIs that Greg discussed, that is a big factor. A lot of, there's a lot of factors that go into the project at this point. We're still waiting for a RAS survey, the RAS survey. They're actually still doing the work, I guess, today even, right?
Yeah, they started the main roads today.
Yeah. So we're still working off of the previous information. That said, Greg's been an expert. He's been with the city for a very long time, and he knows those areas that have been hotspots for lots of the repairs. So whenever the plows leave, in comes the pothole crew. Greg knows where those areas are, and those are big, that's a big factor in this program. But as well, it's also the Payment Condition Index, and then making sure that we do the things that we talked about, which is preservation, emphasizing that, and as well, talking about backlog. That's those poorer sections that really need greater deal of work, but still not rising to the level of a complete reconstruct capital improvement program.
So these particular projects were decided on- So these particular projects were decided on just somebody driving around up until we get the data back?
We did have a payment condition index assessment previously. So it's about five years old?
About five years old.
Yeah, it's about five years old. So we do have that data. And some of our collected information in the intervening years has gone to help degrade those numbers. So in other words, if it was an eighty-five five years ago, depending on what the factors and what things have happened to it since then, it might be a seventy-five now. So depending on those factors, those are some of the weighting, the weight and criteria that go into making the selections. But again, it's also those areas that take a lot of resources otherwise. So as soon as the snow melts, then out comes the paving and the patch truck. That's also a big factor as well.
Well, you know, I think I mentioned it when we heard about that software, that, you know, again, living in the hundred-year-old neighborhoods, and how do we get on those schedules? Because some of the roads are just terrible. But you're saying that you're trying to prevent that. So but once they reach a seventy-five percent, they go on to another list?
Seventy-five isn't necessarily that. Seventy-five is still actually in that good range. So that's still the pavement that we would be preserving. But we actually have roads that are in the twenties and thirties, and that's gonna be considered the backlog, those sections that are really bad. Depending on how bad they are and what other factors are involved, like is there drainage, is there curb gutter sidewalk, other things that go into that repair, then those may be a separate capital project. Otherwise, Greg's gonna be working on the things that can be done more quickly. We'll be bringing a lot of projects to you throughout the years.
How much of a dent have you made in the backlog, just out of curiosity?
Good question. And I don't know that we really have a lot of information about that yet, Greg. Do you-
Couldn't quite tell you at this point.
We're gonna know a lot more when we get our survey information back, and we'll have a lot more confidence about it at that point. But that's a really good question.
Just don't forget about us downtown.
Don't forget about anybody. That's the really cool thing about the survey.
Councilwoman Gumboji.
Greg, this is a presentation that will make a lot of people happy. So thank you.
You're welcome.
I think you talked about three types of repair: chip seal, fog seal, and I think there's a third.
Cape seal, yes.
In layman's language, could you explain what the difference is?
Yeah. So the fog seal is basically just a polymer oil, basically, essentially. And it is spread on the road more like what was done on Willow Creek from Green Lane to Willow Lake Road last. And it is to prevent the road from having infiltration of water, seals it up as well as UV rays, things of that nature. That's more preserved for, like I said, those roads are like a seventy-eight. Those are roads that are in good condition. We're hoping to keep them in that good condition by doing this and not allowing those fine materials to disappear. As far as the chip seal, it's, there's a material spread or sprayed out of a truck, and then basically a small rock or chip spread over the top of that. And that's what a lot of, if you've been on a county road, most of the county roads have been just chip sealed over, as well as some of ours. And then the cape seal is a chip seal with the micro seal over the surface over the top of that. And that really holds that small rock together. And that's made for more of the roads that are in worse condition. So it's kind of the right treatment for the right condition of the road. I kind of went out and drove all of them and determined what would be best and where would we benefit the most. Basically, anything under forty PCI is considered backlog. So if I can take those that are about to drop off of that, or have just come off of that, so thirty-six on average PCI, if I'm able to take those roads and do some sort of surface treatment to get them back into good condition, that's the best bang for our buck. We're not having to go full depth. We're not having to mill a bunch of material out and put it back. So it's a benefit to us to do those roads that are right in that range before they get into that backlog. Because once they get into that backlog, the expense really jumps up there.
What was the treatment you used on Iron Springs near Gale Gardner?
We actually did a mill and fill on that one. That was one of the projects where we had to mill down two and a half, three inches, and then we actually had to repave that area. So that was a condition that we just, we couldn't really treat otherwise. There were failures within the intersection that were full depth and stuff. So we had to go and do a bigger repair on that. But that's why I tried to do a smaller area to keep that expense down. And then from there, Iron Springs, say, to Willow Creek, Miller Valley, we could do something more like a micro seal on that portion of it for a lot less money.
Well, you did a good job. Thank you.
Yes, not a problem.
I was gonna echo that assessment. That's a really high-volume intersection.
It is.
And the way that you were able to handle that night work and everything else was minimal disruption.
Yeah.
And boy, it looks great now.
Collected VA from the community, I believe, yes.
Yeah. And it was fairly dangerous for the streets crew to get out there and patch those. That's why that was kind of a high priority deal. They were trying to get out into that intersection during the day and patch those potholes and stuff. And they would never last. It would just continue to fail. So it was definitely needed.
All right. Thank you very much. So I think, do we have any public comment here?
We do not, Mayor.
All right. Then I'll entertain a motion on items nine C and D.
Mayor?
Well, we have to do it separately anyway.
Oh, you want us to do it separate?
Yeah, we should do it.
Yeah, we should do a motion for C, and then since the presentation was done sort of simultaneously, we don't really need to have discussion on it.
Perfect.
But we do need a separate vote.
Mayor, I move to approve city contract two zero two five dash zero four six.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Passes seven zero.
Mayor, I move to approve city contract two zero two five dash zero four five.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Passes seven zero.
Very good. We'll move on to item nine E.
Adoption of resolution number two zero two four dash one eight nine five approving city contract number two zero two five dash zero four seven and IGA with the Arizona Department of Transportation, accepting a transportation alternatives program grant in the amount of $209,318 for design of a new multi-use pathway on SR eighty-nine.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Ian Mattingly, Transportation Manager. Can you hear me? Okay. So this item, as was stated, is for the approval of an intergovernmental agreement with Arizona Department of Transportation for the acceptance of a transportation alternative grant for the planning and thirty percent design of a multi-use pathway on State Route eighty-nine near Deepwell Ranch Road. That's near the airport. It's around about by the airport. This project was identified by the Prescott Pedestrian Bicycle and Traffic Advisory Committee, PB-TAC, working with staff. The application was submitted, and the city was notified of its award by ADOT. The project represents an opportunity for the city to scope the feasibility and basically provide a DCR, a Design Concept Report, for this, a new point-six-mile-long multimodal pathway to improve the safety of pedestrians and bicyclists along State Route eighty-nine. This connection will improve pedestrian and bicycle safety at the location and enhance the route between Prescott and Chino Valley for both recreational and commuter cyclists. Specifically, the multi-use pathway provides an area for users to move out of the roadway between the rural section of State Route eighty-nine, where there's a shoulder, a paved shoulder, where it ends, and then to the roundabout, which has pedestrian and other facilities. The scoping and thirty percent design document, when complete, will allow the city to apply for future grants to fund the infrastructure, the actual infrastructure improvement of this pathway. ADOT will administer the contract and act as the project manager. The grant is funded at ninety-four point three percent federal with a five point seven percent local match, requiring the city to pay eleven thousand nine hundred and thirty-one dollars. If the project is selected and approved, staff anticipates it will be designed in fiscal year twenty-five, which we are in. We are recommending that council adopt a resolution twenty twenty-four eighteen ninety-five. And with that, I would answer and entertain questions.
Well, when I first looked at this, I was a little concerned about a multimodal or multi-use pathway. But knowing that currently bicyclists can come down southbound on eighty-nine from Chino Valley until they get to this one section, and then the shoulder is gone, and they have to go a half a mile really in a vehicle travel lane. So I mean, that's extremely dangerous. So I think it's worthwhile to work on this section. And of course, this is just for scoping and design. Will we still get that ninety-some percent match once we get to the actual construction costs?
Yeah. So in order to, this grant, the transportation alternative program allows for design or infrastructure grants, but you have to have this first step done in order to ask for the next step, which is the infrastructure. So you'll see that as a theme in the next one as well. So we're really doing the first portion, you know, getting that whole section done so that we can then take that to ADOT again and apply, and then try to win the money that would actually pay for the actual construction. And so, and you're right, we're just trying to plug in this piece that's missing. And it was identified by PB-TAC as a safety improvement primarily. And then I will add that ADOT owns the roadway. This is a section of eighty-nine that we do not own. We own actually just south of Deepwell Roundabout. So we're basically asking for a grant of federal money to design and put something in on the state system that's within the city, but it is ADOT's. And so it's kind of different. But they did approve that because I think they agree that it's a need. A little more background.
Well, I tell you, that's very good to hear. If we can get them to recognize their responsibility in this section of their area that they're responsible for, then it's very appropriate. Councilwoman Forworth.
Thank you, Mayor. I was thinking your exact same thoughts. My question was, because it's their road, and do we have any understanding from them on why they stopped point-six of a mile before a roundabout? They just stopped doing the job, but did the rest of the highway? It just was odd to me.
Yeah. Obviously, you know, we had the, there's been widenings along eighty-nine in various sections going on. And so basically, they're just introducing the urban section, you know, point-six of a mile north of the roundabout. And so they just transitioned from a rural highway to this urban section. And a lot of times, ADOT's main priority is obviously to move highway traffic. It's not always to, you know, add the pedestrian facilities and things like that. So that portion, this wasn't in the city. No portion of eighty-nine through the airport area was in the city or being proposed to be cities when that widening project was done. So ADOT designed it primarily with the roadway in mind, and they just didn't include sidewalk or other facilities. We've obviously, we own Deepwell. It becomes Willow Creek. And when you get around the corner, we have a multi-use path in the portions that we've improved, and we're gonna continue that as the widening continues down towards Jenna Lane as those things widen. So it's a natural fit for us to at least identify and fix the problem. And so it's good that ADOT is agreeing in awarding this. So that's really, it's not an answer, but it's my best answer.
Yes.
Well, I am hoping that you can get ADOT to step up and get this area fixed. I mean, I would suggest maybe bringing to the attention of SIMPO, but considering the fact it took almost twelve years to get the widening in front of Frontier Village, maybe you can get this thing done a lot faster than SIMPO coordinating with ADOT that way.
Yep.
So at least let me know what your progress is. And if we need to engage SIMPO, then I'd be happy to introduce that to the rest of the board.
Yeah. And obviously, SIMPO tracks these federal grants. So we're providing them this information. So it's in the tip of SIMPO. So they are, you know, tracking this and aware of this, and with the updates and all those things, you guys will hear that at the executive board level of SIMPO.
Very good. Council member and Pro Tem, Connie Kentelme.
Mayor, just kind of looking down the road, will this have any impact, or would we maybe look at this design when we start getting a little further down, continuing it as we decide what we're gonna do through eighty-nine at all, the section that we're talking about?
So if we're talking about through the widening portion, it is maybe under consideration.
Right.
I think certainly that we've heard from the public, and, you know, the alternatives are gonna be developed as we engage a design engineer. But I know we've heard comments regarding bikes and pads and things. So certainly, I think that will at least be part of that conversation in that section that we do own. So that's my answer for now. We haven't, you know, we haven't got there. We haven't developed those.
Yeah, because it just seems like if it, people are gonna want that connectivity. And, you know, as we, just don't forget about that as we get through into that area because it's the path they're gonna be on.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any other comments or concerns from council? Any public comment on this?
No, Mayor.
In that case, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to adopt a resolution twenty twenty-four one eight nine five.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Please vote.
Passes seven zero.
Nine F.
Adoption of resolution number two zero two four dash one eight nine seven approving city contract number two zero two five dash zero four eight and IGA with the Federal Highway Administration, accepting a Safe Streets and Roads for All Program Grant in the amount of $250,000 for a Vulnerable Road User Safety Plan and MUTCD Left Turn Signal Phasing Warrant Demonstration Study.
So this is our next grant. As was said, I don't need to repeat that, but basically, this is so separate, you know, different from the last one. While that was federal money administered through ADOT, this is FHWA program, SS4A for short, Safe Streets and Roads for All. This is a direct IGA with the Federal Highway Administration. And for, it's a two-part, basically, project. The first part is the Dexter area, we're calling it, Near North Business District Vulnerable Road User Safety Plan. And then the second part is a demonstration study. That's where we go out and actually do a look at the traffic signals and actually maybe implement some things to determine whether or not they are good and have good results. So that's, it's kind of a two-phase thing. Today, I didn't put this, I think, in your packet specifically. Maybe I did. But this is basically the first phase IGA for the Dexter Vulnerable Road Safety User Plan. We will be back in the future for the second phase, the demonstration grant, which will be a separate IGA. So while the total is $250,000, they're kind of broken into two parts. The first part is today's, and that's a hundred and fifty thousand. So when we sign this, it'll actually be for a hundred and fifty thousand, and the second part is a hundred thousand. This project, like the last one, was identified by the Prescott Pedestrian Bicycle and Traffic Advisory Committee, working with staff. The application was submitted, and the city was notified of its award. The supplemental planning and demonstration grant will create, first, the safety plan for vulnerable road users, primarily pedestrians and cyclists, in the Dexter Near North Business District. That's an area basically bound by, on the south, Gurley Street; on the north, just north of Gale Gardner to about Rosser Street. As you go down Willow Creek and Miller Valley and Grove, you could imagine that we're gonna take in both sides, including Dexter, which is, you know, Lincoln, Ruth, Division, all the way out to Whipple. And then we take in the other side as well. The intent of the study is for us to hire a consultant who will basically do an evaluation and some public input meetings and things to determine the existing pedestrian and bicycle facilities, the generators, places people want to go or are coming from. And then they will try to identify low-cost, high-return improvements in that area so that we can then have a plan so that we can go for infrastructure grants in the future. Like the other one, we need to have a plan in place for us to actually go after infrastructure money. And you can do that through this same program. This is the SS4A program. We can ask for infrastructure funds up into the millions of dollars, but- We can ask for infrastructure funds up into the millions of dollars, but we must have a plan in place to do that. Many of you, and maybe the community has heard of ACT UP. That's an active transportation user study currently being done by SIMPO. When that's done, that might give us some good info that we can use in Prescott. We're kind of doing this in a subset area, a little deeper dive, in an area where we feel like there's a great need for this. But these will be complimentary, and they can both be used to get future money. Unlike the other one, the city will administer this, these contracts ourself, and we will request reimbursement from FHWA. So what that means for me, while we've written a conservative timeline, because we don't know how getting through this process will work, we feel like we have more control in that timing of hiring a consultant and doing some of those things. So that's hopeful that we can get some of this done maybe sooner than later, once we have this IGA in place.
Councilman Moore?
Yeah.
Thank you, Mayor. Ian, it sounds great. And this is an area I know that you and I have talked about, particularly Ruth Street, Wetstein. And I'm really hopeful that we can identify some improvement for pedestrian traffic, particularly for residents of the care centers along Ruth Street and Scott Drive that are walking over to Walmart to shop, because it's, it really is a hazardous area. There are no sidewalks, there's no crosswalks. I've never shared this publicly, but many years ago, my youngest son was hit by a pickup truck on Ruth Street and had to be airlifted to Banner Good Samaritan Hospital and Trauma Center. So this is an area by the high school where we've got a lot of young teenage drivers that are inexperienced, and we have got narrow roads with no curb gutter sidewalk, and elderly people walking. And so I'm really happy to see that we're addressing this. So thank you very much.
Sure.
Yeah, I want to say that this type of a development is really necessary at this point, and it's going to become even more necessary. I remember when we did the cleanup project over in the Dexter neighborhood quite a few years ago, and because of that cleanup, there was more investment coming into the area to build infill small apartment developments. And we've probably got well over 100 or more units now that are, have been built in that area. So when you're close by to shopping, whether it's Fry's or any of those places, people are going to want to walk or bicycle. We've got that new development right there on the corner of Hillside and, and
Walnut.
Miller Valley.
And Walnut.
And then we've got a 32-unit coming into development on Sunset. We've got an 18-unit development that's quite a ways along now on Valley, and that's right next to about a 14-unit development that was completed and fully rented about a year ago. So I think as more and more of these infill smaller developments occur, there's going to be more need for walking and bicycling to local retail facilities, et cetera. And I think that's really what we want to see. We want to see that much more than multifamily developments in the far north areas where it stretches our public safety response, et cetera. So I think this is a really good plan. Councilmember Ferworth?
Thank you, Mayor. The other thing I love about working on this area is it's also where we have US vets and all of us that drive through it every day. We see multiple vets on motorized wheelchairs, and they can't be on the sidewalks, they're in the streets with the rest of us. It's very scary. And so I'm excited that we're going to be studying these areas and helping our veterans also move around, which should also be an attraction for federal funds because of the amount of vets that live in this little area.
Councilmember Rusing?
Thank you. I'd like to thank Ian in the committee for applying for these, these grants. I think this is something that's unprecedented, and I'm thrilled to see the ball finally get rolling and getting some of this connectivity taken care of. Thank you.
Yeah, and I'd just like to say that our former chairman of the PB-TAC, Bill Finelli, he did a lot of the legwork researching these and really spearheading this, so I just wanted to make sure that we recognized him.
Yes, thank you to Bill.
Any other council comments or questions? Do we have any public comment on this?
We do not, Mayor.
Then I will entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move that we adopt Resolution Number 2024-1897.
Second.
We have a motion and a second? Please vote. All right, moving on to the last item, 9-G.
Approval of Recommendations for a Speed Limit Increase on Haciampa Village Lane and on Williamson Valley Road.
So our last item. So this is for the approval of proposed speed limit increases along the entire length of Haciampa Village Lane and a portion of Williamson Valley Road. In the fall of 2023, the city of Prescott completed a citywide speed and travel time study, which provided analysis of 17 arterial and 29 collector roadways within the city. The results of the study were presented to council on November 14, 2023, and provided an overview of traffic conditions and recommendations to address areas which experience speeding. While several streets were identified for future mitigation, four locations having speeds greater than seven miles per hour above the posted speed limit were identified by the consultant as being underposted for roadway conditions and geometrics. Those roadways included the entire length of Haciampa Village Lane, Gurley Street between McCormick Street and Park Avenue, Miller Valley Road between Hillside and Fair and Four Points, and Williamson Valley Road between Standing Rock Drive, that's at North 40 subdivision, if you're aware of that, and the city limits to the north, the county line. These roadways were identified for speed limit increases of five miles per hour above their current postings to better align the posted speed with the actual speeds being driven. The proposed adjustments aim to match the function of the roadway and better reflect the current character of these corridors. This can reduce disparities in speeds and reduce the potential for vehicle conflicts. Sorry. Considerations include adjacent development and function of the roadway. The increase will also reduce, or these increases, reduce the perception of speeding and decrease the need for enforcement in these areas, allowing speed enforcement to be focused in other areas where they can be more effective. Following that council presentation, those recommendations were brought back to PB-TAC and discussed. Based on their discussions, they recommended two of the four speed limit increases be implemented, with Gurley Street and Miller Valley's road remaining unchanged. PB-TAC recommended Gurley Street retain a 25 mile an hour speed limit due to its proximity to the downtown and its corresponding high pedestrian traffic and special event activities. They voted to recommend Miller Valley Road retain a 30 mile an hour speed limit due to the traffic volume, the close proximity and spacing of driveways, and high pedestrian volumes. Based on this input, the PB-TAC recommendation is being moved forward for your consideration. PB-TAC recommended speed limit changes include the following therefore. Raise Haciampa Village Lane the entire length, that's between Copper Basin Road and Thumbbutte, from 25 miles per hour to 30 miles per hour. Williamson Valley Road from Standing Rock Drive north to the city or county line, increase the speed from 35 to 40. That's through the S curve, if you're familiar, Yuccashba. Gurley Street, McCormick Street to Park Avenue, retain the existing 25 mile an hour limit. And Miller Valley Road, Hillside Fair, Hillside and Fair, to Four Points, retain the existing 30 mile an hour speed limit. An additional note, in order to ensure that there was general support of the speed limit increase from residential property owners living adjacent to Haciampa Village Lane, that's the only roadway in here that's not in arterial and has direct, at least direct adjacent residential property. The staff working with the PB-TAC contacted and met with the Haciampa HOA to share this information, and based on those meetings, the HOA voted on the matter and has provided support of the speed limit increase. I will add an additional note. We've been working with Haciampa Village Lane on other issues for quite some time, and they supported the increase, understanding that Haciampa Village Lane is likely underposted. But we will continue to work with them to try to control the upper-level speeders, those who don't just adjust their speed or stay at the speed if it goes to 30. But they feel like those aren't the people that are the problem, it's those that are the 15% ones that are outside these limits. And so we're going to continue to have discussions with them, and we've been working on signing and crosswalks and some other things. So I just wanted to give you that as a background. So if you approve of these recommendations, the speed limit changes will be completed using existing inventory in City Cruise. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Well, I can tell you, my, speaking for myself, when I first came onto council six and a half years ago, that was one of the first questions I asked. I'd like to see your most recent citywide traffic study. And the answer I got was, we've never done one. So even though it didn't take as long as Frontier Village, here we are today. And I tell you, I drive that Williamson Valley section multiple times a day, and I see a large number of vehicles that are exceeding that 35-mile current limit. And when you head north and you go into the county, you're on, it's the same road, the same visuals, and all of a sudden, you go from 35 to 45. So I think bringing this up to 40 makes a lot of sense. If you try to stay at 35 when you're going that downhill, you have to, you have to make an effort to put your brakes on. So I think we're still going to get some of those people. There was somebody today that was passing me at almost 60, and that's criminal speed. But for most of the traffic, I think 40 is a reasonable number, it's a safe number, and it might be a little bit disturbing to the sheriff deputies that sit there at the bottom of the road by Sylvan Drive and writing tickets all the time when it's really not appropriate. So I'll thank you personally for that. And I do want the public to know, I didn't advocate for this particular section, but it's badly needed. And I think the Haciapa Village Drive is also an appropriate speed setting as well. I've been up there a number of times, and that's, when you consider the condition of the roadway and your sightlines and things like that, it just makes a lot of sense. And I also agree that changing the speeds on Gurley or Miller Valley don't make a lot of sense, because all kinds of people are jaywalking across there, and there's people coming out from side parking areas and things like that. I think it's, that makes a lot of sense. So I thank you for finally getting to this point. Do we have any public comment?
We do not, Mayor. Councilwoman Ferworth is on the request to speak, though.
Well, I didn't see that, but Council, Councilwoman Ferworth.
Thank you for not ignoring me. I was super excited to see the first results that I recall coming forward from that November traffic-wide study with, with this agenda item. And so the question I had was, when will we get to see some of the other, you know, signal coordination and all the other things that were as part of that traffic study, to get an update on those two?
Sure. So on travel time, which is, you know, the different section, that's, the recommendation's really focused on improving traffic signal timing and coordination. And so we've put in the, this year's budget, I think, $350,000 to continue to upgrade detection, radio communication, and then controllers, so that we can do something like we did on Willow Creek Road on Iron Springs, Sheldon, and some of those major corridors. We have $300,000 additionally in fiscal year '26 because we feel like $650,000 should be enough money for us to buy all the equipment. We need to continue, basically finish, all those upgrades that we have left. We basically, with Willow Creek, did about nearly half of our signals to '27. And so we have enough money in those, these two fiscal years to get all the equipment up to snuff, implement the system, and then we want to hire a consultant to develop the traffic signal timing plans. And that also includes improvement of standalone intersections. A good example would be like Gail Gardner and Gurley, so that they have GPS time clocks in them, so that we can be a little more efficient, even with the little, the ones that's sitting out there all alone, White Spar and Copper Basin, for instance, so that they can be more efficient at night and other times. So that's what's going on, on that end. And then with this, obviously, this was a small piece that was there that we needed to address. But we have applied for a large grant. It came through earlier this year for you guys. It was a Highway Safety Improvement Program grant for radar feedback signs. That was for 3.25 million, and that's to fund 150 or more, depending on how we handle the contract. Radar feedback signs, that was a major component in the speed mitigation section, was to implement those on our arterials and collectors. And so we're waiting to hear back from ADOT on that. And then we also had a project for 2.75 million for intersection improvements that were related to spot improvements of intersections like Whipple and Ruth, and Whipple and Division, and Four Points, and things, but also that have some benefits to speed, like medians and choke downs and things like that. So we're primarily doing that. That's kind of where we are right now, we're waiting to hear, and we're just taking those actions, so.
Yeah, I love when we take the actions that we, like we did with Willow Creek, make a big social media communications ploy for it to take credit. And so I think some of these things that you're just talking about right now, not only what the two items you're going to approve today, but the stuff we're going to do with Sheldon and a few of those other streets, if we can really make sure that when you're doing it, we're tying into John Heine and social media and really making a big play out of, we heard you, we know, and we fixed it. So thank you.
Yep.
Yeah, I agree. Ian, we've committed a large amount of public tax dollars to try to get the signals timed, to get the image detection of vehicles, and, and even, I think bicycles are detected in that as well. So I think we have to continue to publicize the fact that you can stick your cruise control on the speed limit and hit green lights almost all the way. I've done that a couple of times now. I made it all the way out to Pioneer Parkway and Willow Creek without, without aiming to stop. And of course, the guys that passed me at 15 miles an hour in the, in the number one lane, I always end up passing them when we get to the signal, because they just ended up hitting the red, and then they got to stop, and then I just cruise on by in the curbside lane. So we need to communicate that, and as we expand this into Iron Springs and some of the other areas, we can not only notify the motorists that that's on the way, it's coming, but also mention the fact that it already exists in Willow Creek, because I think a lot of motorists still aren't aware that that's, that can be done. And I think most people would just as soon hit the green all the way and not have to worry about trying to speed up because they might be able to make the next light, right?
Yep.
Any other comments or concerns? Any public comment on this one?
No, Mayor.
All right, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the following limit changes. One, Haciapa Village Lane, the entire length, increase speed from 25 miles per hour to 30 miles per hour. And secondly, Williamson Valley Road, Standing Rock Drive to county line, increase speed from 35 miles per hour to 40 miles per hour.
Second.
We have a motion and a second? Please vote.
I'm a yes.
Thank you. Passes 7-0.
Well, that concludes our agenda for this voting meeting today. I came across a very interesting quote to close out the meeting. "Our government leaders have made many mistakes in the past when they've lost sight of the sacred American values rooted in the Declaration of Independence and the Constitution. Today, we are at the brink of even graver mistakes and assaults on these values." Prophetic words from constitutional scholar, law professor, and chief counsel to the US Senate Watergate hearings. Senate Watergate hearings in 1973. Boy, it couldn't be any more appropriate today than it was then. Thank you, and this meeting is adjourned.